We're going to call to order the regular meeting of the Neshoba Regional School Committee at 6:31 tonight. And we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. You guys can rise with me if you choose to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, everybody, welcome. We're going to start with public comment on the agenda here, but we have no public comments to share this evening, so we're going to move right on to the consent agenda. And I think that we're going to bundle this and keep it bundled unless there is an objection, because there are four items here. To my vice chair for a motion.
I will move to accept the consent agenda, including the warrants of January 20, 2023, and February 3, 2023, as well as the meeting minutes of January 4, 2023, and January 18, 2023.
I'll second that. Any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes.
In regards to the minutes of January 4, there was a typographical error, which I'm responsible for. At 7:03, the reason for reconvening was announced that we needed to amend the motion to go into executive session, not open session. So I will correct that. In addition to that, and I intended to do this before I sent over the draft pocket of minutes, Ms. Masterson has taken to including in her minutes a description, an itemized description of the warrant's date, description, and amount. I intended to do that, and if there's no objection, I will do that along with the correction to the minutes at 7:03.
Okay. Thank you, Joe, for letting us know that. Amy.
I wasn't present. Like, I have to abstain from voting on the minutes from January 18, so should they be removed from the consent agenda?
No, you can just abstain.
Abstain from voting.
From the consent agenda if you choose to. Or you can vote. It's up to you. Okay. Any other discussion? All right, so accepting Joe's small caveats there, we're going to take the vote. All those in favor of the consent agenda, raise your hand. Okay, so more attention. All right, thanks, Joe, for doing that. All right, everybody, so on the agenda, we have the school committee chairperson update. I have nothing to update you on, other than things that are already in the agenda otherwise, so we'll move right on to the superintendent's report. Making amazing time right now.
Madam Chair, we're 27 minutes ahead of schedule, but if we spend too much time patting ourselves on the back, I'm afraid we'll pay for it.
Yeah.
So we'll just keep moving along. Madam Chair, thank you, committee. Thank you for being here tonight. I have some updates for you to share. The first is on the school building project visits. They've been going really well. We've attended the select board meetings, and Lancaster-Bolton still with us for providing board briefs regarding the building project, of which Board Brief Number Two was most recently presented to those committees. And I also had the opportunity to go to the Lancaster Council on Aging with Assistant Superintendent Friend. We were able to interact with about a dozen residents in that meeting to discuss the building project, you know, talk about the concerns, sort of the myths, some of the truths, some of the wonderings people had. It was really, really a productive conversation, and we really benefited from it. So we're planning some future return visits to the Council on Aging, but we have Bolton scheduled up for February, and Stowe is scheduled up for March. So more information on that, but I think the community visits are going well, and we're starting to get more attention. And I know we'll all be doing some visits with our PTOs locally, and we have some other things we're reaching out to them about. So Dr. Boynton, I believe I'm at the high school Bolton conversation.
March 23.
March 23. So those are being scheduled up, so we're continuing to build the conversation around the school building project and, you know, the need for a new Neshoba Regional High School. The next piece, and as always, just kind of kept, follow us on the social media, so that's in there. So any members of the public that are interested, you can follow us on Twitter, Instagram, and Facebook. And the second announcement I have tonight is regarding the Mary Rollinson Elementary Principal Search. We closed the posting, Ms. Stook, last Friday on the 27th, and so we've collected 14 candidates from around the region for the job. We are currently reviewing those applications, and we have a team. One of the things that we're working on this year, and I'll brief the committee at a future meeting about this, is trying to remove our implicit bias from the processes, or even removing our influence about the candidates onto others in those processes. So right now, our administrators are reviewing the applications of all of the candidates in an objective way and providing me that feedback without the influence of knowing who's providing that feedback, so I can look at an aggregate of what these candidates look like. And then we will also, prior to the panel interviews, have about a half hour to 45-minute implicit bias training for all the members of that panel, and our community members will be joining us, so that we can remember to keep it the front of our minds that we're trying to objectively examine all the candidates that come into our process. So that process is moving right along. We'll be conducting the screening interviews on February 9, of which will advance our finalists. Approximately five candidates is, I think, a good group for our finalists, and that, Ms. Stook, is on February 15, I believe.
I think that comes right to back to 15.
14th or 15th, that's right there, right around Valentine's Day, so it'll all be warm in our hearts when those candidates come through. I do not participate in the panel interviews. Where I participate with the candidates are in screening interviews. The panel interviews are for that group to then objectively give me feedback. Then when we have the site visits, I sit down and do hour-long interview, one-on-one, with all of the candidates. And then I'm present also for the faculty forums and the community forums. So it looks very much like the Center School process, if anybody out there was following the Center School process last year. So moving on to talk about updates on strategic work. I put my report in turn on Superintendent Evaluation Update on Goals in the superintendent's report as a reference tool, so I won't go into detail on that at this moment, as that's an item later on our agenda, but I just wanted you to know that's where that is being kept. And then I will turn it over to Mr. Mulcaren at this point to provide us an update on the budget since we last presented two weeks ago. Mr. Mulcaren.
Thank you. There is a narrative within the superintendent's report, but we're going to switch over to our slides. All right. Okay. Yeah, that's that one. Yep. Thank you very much. So thank you for the opportunity to update the committee, the work that we've done since our budget workshop two weeks ago. We thank you for your participation, your questions, and also a thank you to our Budget and Warrant Subcommittee for meeting and doing the same post the budget workshop. Laura, if you could just go ahead, a couple of slides. Thank you. So we are keeping at the very beginning, the very front of our minds, and that's why it still continues to be in the presentation this evening, our mission, our vision, our core values as a district under the strategic work that we're doing. So this continues to be, when we're making updates or adjustments to the budget moving forward, this does not change. This continues to be the focus and our compass point for our work within the budget, just like everything else to do with the school district. So some quick notes on our updates. So edits and typos that were noticed during the presentation have been adjusted. This includes the sub nurses line, the MRE classroom supplies line. We did notice that we needed to level our Hale and Sawyer Dean salaries. Now they both match because they are new positions. We updated some of our special education lines in the same manner that we leveled funded our budget-based supplies, materials, those types of things. We did that within our special education lines. Given that we leveled funded our daily substitute line, we went back and we made the same process and leveled funded our custodial overtime and temporary help lines. Looking at what we've been spending in those areas, it felt appropriate to do so, and then also that matches our process for other substitute areas. We have made adjustments and created and updated our overall proposal, budget amount, and therefore there's an update to assessment. However, and I'll cover this a little bit later as well, adjustments resulted in a reduction of $105,861. We do not have updates on other budget factors, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in detail as we're still waiting for the governor's budget. So our overall budget at this point today is $65,426,842, which is a 5.14% increase from FY '23. If you want to continue further, we did update our budget, so therefore our drivers have changed incrementally. However, they have changed a little bit, so that's available for review. We're going to go a little bit further. We've also updated, go back one slide, thank you. We've also, just for purposes of reviewing historical information, we've updated our proposed budget and the voted, excuse me, the proposed increase here as well. Revenues, again, nothing has changed in this area. Those orange highlighted areas continue to be waiting updates once we have our state figures based out of the governor's budget. Foundation enrollment and the high school enrollment, we haven't made any updates there yet. As we've discussed a couple times, our foundation enrollment will inform how we input our enrollment for assessment for FY '24, so we're using the same process moving forward. So again, here's an updated assessment projection. However, the only figure that is really updated within here is our total proposed budget. There's incremental changes to the possible assessment percentages, but again, that's largely based on previous factors, such as the same minimum local contributions from FY '23 are still here because we're still awaiting state numbers. So we've covered this before, but just, this is really the bulk of where we're at, waiting for more information. And again, our contracts are still within negotiation. We are waiting for our insurance and benefits updates based on the information shared with me by a representative. I expect to have an update on insurance and benefit rates and necessary budget adjustments at the next school committee meeting. We're still waiting our charter and school choice assessments. We're waiting for state numbers, both with revenue and assessment. And then also, and this is the major piece that we're reading from, from the state, is our Chapter 70 and foundation enrollment. Regarding Chapter 70 and foundation enrollment, Governor Healy has stated that her FY '24 budget will be released on March 1, which is the same date as our budget public hearing. However, the governor has indicated that educational figures will be released prior to March 1. Any questions on updates?
Why don't we stick to budget questions first, and then if we need to go back to anything that Kirk presented on, we can do that, too. Anything that we wanted to ask or say about the budget?
I have a quick question. March 1, has Governor Hughes' office issued a statement as to why it's going to be that late?
Yes, they have, actually, and this is typical when there's a governor changeover. There's a provision where the budget is allowed to be presented 30 days longer than during a gubernatorial.
I just know that. I didn't know.
Yeah. Thank you.
There's not been a formal statement or press release based on the educational budget, but the governor has stated in public forums of some sort that the education budget, housing budget, I think there's another area that they do want to produce ahead of that March 1 date.
May I, Madam Chair?
Yeah.
So Attorney Gleason, I made a little, mentioned this a little bit in the last meeting. And Madam Chair, it would be your consideration, of course. Let's say hypothetically, if we did get these numbers March 1, that's when we're scheduled to give our budget hearing, which, if that were the case, I don't think that would give us an opportunity to do the due diligence we would need to do in informing our town leaders around that. So it would be that point in time that we can consider one of two things. We could have the budget hearing on March 8, and then proceed to a vote on March 15. Or, under those circumstances, you could just decide that on March 15, you have the budget hearing prior to the school committee meeting, and we'll vote the same evening. That would be at the discretion of the chair, of course, but I think that is something for us to forecast and look at. Will we seriously take on that consideration if, by, say, April vacation, we don't have a number from, excuse me, February vacation, yes, April, boy, that was rather ambitious. I think at that point in time, we can consider that. But I just, I want to share that with the committee at large, not that there's anything to do at that point, but it could be a potential consideration.
So can we perhaps set February 24 as the deadline at which time we will make this decision?
Yes.
So let me just poll the committee a little bit. What would you rather we do if her numbers come late? Which is where my money's at. I bet they come late. So, sorry, Governor Healy. Would you rather bump everything and have a pop-up meeting on the 8?
Yes.
Can I get a thumbs up if you like the pop-up meeting on the 8?
What's the "or"?
The "or" is we would do it all on the 15.
Just to let you know, there is a third alternative, not that I'm sure it's very attractive, but we could still convene the public hearing on March 1 and take public comment at that time. We do not have to close the public hearing. We could continue the public hearing to the 15th. So if we didn't want to do the 8, you could open the public hearing on the 1st, continue the public hearing to the 15th, then close the public hearing on the 15th, and then we could go to a vote at that point. It's just the third alternative in case that was any assistance, which it probably isn't.
I know how much we love pop-up meetings.
The other consideration, Madam Chair, is we could just move the scheduled March 1 meeting to March 8.
Right, so we could, you know.
So rather than add another meeting, we just postpone that meeting one week.
That's my preferred option.
You like that option, make the first, the meeting on the 8? Do we have any other things on the 8? Not normally, right?
On Wednesdays?
No.
With the link me or anything?
Just a quick opinion on the possibility of doing everything bundled up in one meeting. I don't know where people are at with that. I don't think that that's a good idea, to offer the budget and then immediately vote without giving due time to have community feedback.
I agree.
Yep. So it seems like the will of the committee is to move the first to the 8 on the 24th.
We'll make that decision by the 24th. It's not a very good.
Hopefully you're on a warm beach somewhere. Doubt it.
I don't think so. But it could be somewhere warm, just not a beach.
All right, so any other budget questions? Anything that you wanted to weigh in on with this new, somewhat similar, update? Yeah, Mike?
So similar question about our yet-to-be-negotiated and approved contracts. We are taking an educated guess when we are inserting these numbers in the current iteration of the budget, but once the vote comes around, assuming that the contracts have not been negotiated, how do we set an appropriate placeholder so that there are minimal surprises once the budget gets finalized?
Yes, that's already there.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
Yes, a placeholder is already calculated.
Got it. So that when the negotiations happen, are we still considering this sort of like a worst, the most conservative?
We have to let negotiations play out, Mr. Vereshvchuk. We get there, we understand what we have, and that's as far as we can go, because that's the approved budget that we've got.
This is almost like the ceiling, would you say?
Yeah.
Potentially.
That's what I mean, the most conservative version of the budget.
Depending on your definition of conservative, but yeah. So any other questions or comments? I'd like to say something that I think we talked about the last time that we were together, but I wanted to point to that again. And I wonder if, Ross, you could go to the budget drivers slide, which is slide 6, or I'm sorry, Laura, thank you. Slide 6. What I'm noticing, and I think that everybody else probably notices the same, but it's worth pointing out, is that we have a few drivers that are giant. We have the three at the top that I'd like to refer to as kind of non-discretionary to a certain extent, things that are either negotiated already or things that are beyond our control. That makes up, if, you know, my rudimentary math right now is $2.4 million of the increase. Is that about right? 2.4 million of the increase, and the total increase being 3.2. And so then, as I'm looking down through the line items, I see some debt service that has to be managed, right, that's not negotiable at this point. We have some facilities costs that, you know, I'm in particular looking at the utilities costs. I'm arguing that there is a very small portion of the increase that is what I would call discretionary. And so I would just make sure that everybody understands that as much as we would like to keep our budgets lean or leaner potentially, that this is a lean budget. Can you just eliminate one time, Kirk? How many FTEs, how many full-time equivalents are we reducing next year? Not through removing staff, but just reducing positions?
Yeah, because I'd like to reiterate, we don't feel that people are at risk of losing their jobs due to reductions, but because of retirements and other movements, we'll be able to, under their licensure, put them in places. But the total FTE is a reduction of eight FTE, just short of that, and that is across the non-rep, the Unit C, and Unit A.
Okay. And so we have eight positions that you were able to scrub out of this budget?
Yes.
Okay. So I just want to say, I appreciate that. I think that you guys have put together a very conservative assessment here, and as the revenues come in, we're hoping that the percentages that we send up to the towns, that increase will obviously come down like it does every year.
Sure.
We're hoping. But this is a very different kind of year, and even despite all of the inflation costs, we see a relatively manageable increase in the larger context of public schooling and in driving our strategic plan to where we need it to be.
Madam Chair, I would also like to point out a couple of things. One is when we look at these costs, we have mandates. We have mandates to educate all students. We especially have mandates to educate our special education students that have a range of needs, and some of those needs are intensive in the way that they require very expensive program. And it is by circumstance that we have brought some blessed lives into our school system as they moved into our school district, and along with a 14% increase, just that alone, that we're mandated to pay for but could not forecast, because that is just impossible to forecast, that alone has a two percentage point increase on each of the town's assessments. Just that. So if you look at where the assessment percentages are for our towns right now, you can see, this is where we have to fund these mandates and use other levers that we have, both school side and town side, to ensure that we're paying for an education, that these families and these students have a right to a free and appropriate public education.
And you were saying that in passing, we talked about various levers that your association is trying to pull with the state government to make sure that these mandates are funded.
Yes, and it's in that, Madam Chair, I'll invite you to attend the legislative breakfast with me on March 3, where the superintendents of Massachusetts are going to be meeting with our state legislatures in Newton. And so in a planning session at the tri-county mail-in table that I was at yesterday, we spoke of those things. And the levers that we're talking about is not to reduce the OOD requirement. I think Attorney Gleason had a question of that at our last meeting. It is other types of levers in terms of circuit breaker increases. Our association believes strongly that as these, as increases in special education circuit breaker come in at like about a 75% rate, we are advocating for it to be reimbursed to school systems at a 90% rate, as well as special education transportation, which is very costly. Also looking for offsets in the governor's overall budget for the 14%. And it's our understanding that these things are being discussed with the governor, but we won't know what that will look like until the March date. So even if we get our House One numbers in and we're able to present those to towns, that doesn't mean that there won't be other ways that that's addressed in the budget, because you know the governor will present her budget March 1, and then oftentimes the budget doesn't even get passed until July, after all the political wrangling goes on. But, you know, the House numbers tend to be, the House One numbers tend to be consistent once they are presented, because they understand, once they present, towns have to vote to fund their schools, and they need those numbers to be consistently applied. So there's a lot of factors out there. So the lobbying around any offsets coming out of the governor's office, we can't be certain they're going to be sitting there March 1. March 1, we should have an indicator of what the governor is proposing. And, you know, part of the governor's campaign was pledging public support for public education and looking at revenues coming into the state as public education being a priority for funding. So let's see what happens in those proposals, and, you know, we're hopeful we're going to come to some supportive agreements there.
Scott.
Yeah, just want to, first, I just want to thank both of you for those comments to kind of help put the increase in the budget into context, which I suspect in no small part was in response to the email we all received a few weeks back from another elected official in our towns and who was trying to give us direction about how to do our jobs. And I thought that was inappropriate, but this committee is doing a responsible job in developing a budget that's consistent with the educational goals of this community. And to the extent that there are levers we could pull to change our budget outlook, I think that the time for that, those kinds of decisions, is much earlier in the school year. For example, you know, the one lever we do have at our disposal to change our budget outlook would be student-teacher ratios, and that's not the kind of discussion you have a month before you have to vote on a budget. And so, you know, I think that's a conversation that's worth having, say, next summer or fall, to decide if the ratios we currently have are the appropriate ratios, ones we really want. But I do believe that the administration and the committee is doing a responsible job in coming up with a budget that, like I say, reflects our educational goals and isn't very, is not profligate, is very well thought out. So thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Scott.
I agree. I want to just say thanks for the transparency, because I've been working in schools a long time, and this is very transparent, and I really appreciate that.
Amy.
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge the effort to give us this update and show where additional cost savings were found by going through and finding typographical errors or leveling certain salary items. Just, I think, showing these kind of steps that are taken along the way does go, helps us show other elected officials the kind of work that's going on behind the scenes. Well, in this case, it's not behind the scenes, it's right out here for everybody to see. So, and I echo what the other members have said.
Great. All right.
One last thing to add to that update is that Mr. Mulcaren and I met with all three of the town administrators this past Monday, and we went through the budget presentation with them, outlining everything, tying all the positions back to the budget, showing them where we are looking at trying to find everything we can. It was a very productive meeting, and it was a good partnership with the three town administrators. They recognize where we sit today and not knowing where the House One numbers come in, because they depend on as well, in terms of the equalization factors for town funding. So they understand that methodology very well. And so we'll continue those partnerships. The Joint Finance Committee meeting is being hosted by the town of Stowe this year, and Stowe will be inviting the chairs of the advisory board from Bolton and the FinCon board from Lancaster, along with the three TAs to participate in a budget discussion that night. And that will not be a hearing discussion in terms of public participation. The public is welcome to attend and view and those types of things the same way we do for our school committee meetings. It will be remote. We found we had nice participation. We found we had nice participation offering remotely last year. But that will be an opportunity for us to, again, do another run of the budget in front of the public prior to the hearing, to make sure folks are fully informed on financing, where we stand this year.
And what's that date?
That is February 27th, Mr. McCarron.
It's either that Monday or Tuesday.
It's the Tuesday after vacation.
Right before the public hearing.
So the 28th?
I have it as the 28th.
Yeah.
And you will be invited as well?
Yeah, yeah. Mr. McCarron and I will be there. We will present a truncated version of the budget. We won't be going through all the tie-outs like we did at the workshop last week. It'll be more of the drivers, the revenue, and you know, there are perhaps costs and explanations of what the impacts would to the budget for sure.
Is there value in a member of the school committee being there as well? Obviously happy to represent, but if our budget and board chair would rather?
I have to look at my calendar, but...
I wonder if we could extend an invitation to one of us?
In speaking with the host this year, I don't think that would be an issue, as the three TAs are also coming. So having a partner, we just didn't want a room of 25 to 30 people asking questions, because then, you know, that would be the nice old nine-hour meeting that we would never get to the end of. So I think it would be perfectly appropriate.
So should I reach out to our FinCon Chair, perhaps?
We'd be happy to do that. Mr. McCarron can reach out to her directly in planning that and let her know that we would like to bring a member of our committee.
Okay. Okay.
One more question.
Yeah?
Regarding the unresolved budget factors, I know that we have a placeholder for our insurance and benefits, and that we're waiting for that. Do we have a sense of the timeline for that? I don't recall if we went over this last, at the workshop.
We should have an update on rates and impact on the budget before the next school committee meeting. We're supposed to receive that information end of January, beginning of February.
Thank you.
Amy, my question was along the same lines regarding the insurance and benefits, and if you would be able to just remind us and community members who might be watching, whether that's something that we had an ability this year to shop around, or whether we're locked into a particular package this year, and what flexibility there is to negotiate that.
So I'll do my best to answer that, and Anne Marie, I don't know if she could offer any information as well, since tied into the teacher's contract. So the 70/30 split, where the district picks up 70%, and the employee pays the 30% on health insurance, that's contract language, and the same with the retiree 50/50 split, I believe. So the other piece of that is that the, you know, and maybe Anne Marie knows the specific language, but we would have to form an insurance advisory committee, which is a collaboration between the school committee and the NREA. It's not necessarily something that we can't create levers or explore sort of outside of that agreement. So there's timelines stipulated. I think there's a date in November where that would need to happen by. So I have to pull up the specifics on the dates. Anne Marie, I'm not sure that's specific enough.
That's right. Any plan changes need to go to the insurance advisory committee well in advance, so any plan changes now in a convening of that committee would be for the following year.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you for that budget update, everyone. A lot of hard work going in there. I just want to really quickly pause and ask if anybody has any questions about the school building project visits or the Mary Rollinson principal search update. All right. Great. So moving right along, our student representative is going to be with us this evening, so we're going to go past that report for now. But as always, the high school is buzzing with lots and lots of amazing things, so I was forward to hearing from them in the future. We're going to move on to new business, and without objection from the committee, we're going to ask to move the program of studies review up to the beginning and invite a special guest to the table. Everybody's okay with that? No objections? Wonderful. So Dr. Boynton from our high school, our high school principal is going to share with us a little something about the new program of studies, current feedback.
Yeah, I would like to introduce Dr. Boynton, our principal administrator of regional high school. She will be going over the high school program of studies. As you know, I have taken on the added responsibility of helping us get prepared for these meetings in recent days, and I get a B+ for this. The only thing that kept me away from an A is there was a document I didn't get linked into the meeting materials. It is this presentation, but it has for you highlighted in red and blue changes to the program of studies to just make it an easier read. So I'll be happy to share these with Mr. McCarron and his friend. Do you have a copy as well? Do you need a copy?
The change memo, right.
Okay.
Just so you know, it's not really about the grade.
Thanks.
Kirk, can you just eliminate really quickly on the agenda, this item has an asterisk next to it.
Yeah.
Why is that?
The only reason that has an asterisk next to it is because it's a presentation and it's a marker device force in our organizing document, so I think when it was cut and pasted in, the asterisk went with it. So it's a signal to us of try not, try not to do too many presentations and then not.
I kept looking for like where the asterisk was in the bottom, probably what the asterisk meant.
There you have it. Come to the point.
You're understanding why I play the role that I play and the wonderful Ms. Masterson plays the role that she plays, as she takes care of all those little tricks and things for me to help me stay on task. So forgive me, in other words, ignore the asterisks and forgive my error. So without further ado, if you'll forgive my tomfoolery here, Dr. Boynton, go ahead and begin. Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Thank you so much for participating. It's a pleasure. So I'm going to give you a moment to maybe look at the change memo, because that's really the executive summary of all of the changes in the program of studies, which is extensive. And you have the, you've got the color-coded version of the program of studies where you see the language in red, that's language that's getting removed, and then language in blue that is being added. What the change memo does is articulate section by section, kind of a summary of what and a high level why this is happening. So I'll just give folks a moment to take a peek at the change memo. All right. So the Neshoba Program of Studies, we began a really substantial review process last academic year, and it continues into this year. So in, with deep collaboration, actually, with the Office of Teaching and Learning and Assistant Superintendent Laura Friend, and also in fulfillment of our curriculum alignment work, we have really dug in to this revision process of the program of studies. And we're taking a look, you know, aligning with our strategic plan as well as our, the high school school improvement plan, and sort of the overarching kind of connecting is also our visioning work for the new high school and our newly adopted portrait of a Neshoba graduate. So what you will see beginning to emerge in our newly imagined program of studies are those competencies and the transfer skills that we are so hoping that our students will experience and embody and embrace and learn through their experience and their time at Neshoba Regional High School. So we're really excited. Our department heads have really leaned in. People are very excited about the changes, and you'll see, prior to publication, just as a disclaimer, it's undergoing a final, final review. My administrative assistant, Marcia Winter, with her eagle eyes, is going to be having this be a top-notch and professional document for publication. And after presenting today, we hope to publish by the end of the week, the final document. So just a quick overview of some of the more, the bigger changes. In applied arts, there were a lot of changes last year, so a few changes, opening up some of our electives to our ninth graders so that they have more options for electives. And then we are very excited for this product design for entrepreneurs class. Design and manufacturing was a little low with the enrollment, and with the shifts in the world of design technology and the global economy, it's going to be a DECA qualifying class. We're really excited to have this design for entrepreneurs where students will have the opportunity to develop a concept and then bring it to fruition in the design phase, and incorporating both business as well as some of our applied arts technology, kind of weaving them into the, into a single course. We're excited to expand our journalism and broadcast offerings to include One and Two to allow students deeper learning in that very exciting field. And those of you who have seen our Neshoba news broadcast segments, they are amazing, and we've got a brand-new group of students here for, in second semester. And so it's really become part of the school, part of our culture, and students will be able to dive a little bit deeper, as well as serve in leadership capacities if they're in design or in broadcast two, supporting students who are just entering into the broadcast one. One of the departments with some of the most significant changes is our English department, and the changes that you see in the freshman, sophomore, and junior classes, that is directly aligned with our curriculum revision process and alignment with the math standards, and we're very excited about those. The other big piece is that formerly at Neshoba, the senior elective courses were not published in the program of studies, so there was almost a two-step registration process that complicated our scheduling process, but it also was a little bit of a mystery for students what they were signing up for. So we've now demystified that process, and the team has worked, even beginning last year, to develop high student interest classes, so getting the feedback of this year's seniors when they were last year's students, juniors, and then also this year's juniors, to develop really high-interest student classes that are semester-based. Students have to take four years of English, but these are semester-based to partly replicate the college process as well. So they'll be taking two semester-long English classes. Some minor edits as well. In English, we no longer and have not for several years offered theater, and then the journalism, One and Two, is not an English credit, so it now properly lives in the applied arts section of the program of studies. Fine and performing arts, you'll see some changes in particular to our music classes, and again, there's newly adopted standards, and some of the language and the course changes there are in reflection of the new standards, and also just looking to freshen up the course descriptions and properly describe actually what's happening in the class itself. So the example there is the advanced jazz ensemble becoming jazz big band, because they are, they're engaging in big band. And then revising the, where is it down there? Broadway ensemble, splitting that and having treble and then tenor and bass, which is really what we want to happen versus a larger ensemble. And Joe McCarthy can speak, I'm not a music person, so he can speak more eloquently to that. For our math section, we included at the very beginning a whole section on math skills and competencies that really are the through line for all of our math experiences, so that's a common experience for all of our students. In science, there were very few edits with the, really, the bigger ones were the removal of astronomy and disease and medicine as electives, because we were seeing low course enrollment, and students are gravitating to other more popular electives, and it didn't make sense to just have them linger in the program of studies. We still have a rich array of science offerings at the elective area. And then in social studies, they've done some great work, really honing in on those, the competencies and historical themes that students will be exposed to throughout their experience, and that updated language and the skills as well as the transfer skills that our students experience throughout their time in our social studies classes. And then in special education, taking a look at some name changes from our prescriptive classes to standards, because our students are following curriculum that is aligned to math standards in preparation for them taking the MCAS. So we wanted to reflect actually what the courses are, and prescriptive was a name that was confusing to people. So it is, they are standards-based classes. In terms of deleting the geometry, Algebra II, and science prescriptive, we've moved to a two-year biology sequence to help students who need the support prepare for the MCAS. And then in our upper-level math classes, we're finding that in the younger grades, grades nine and 10, it may be more appropriate for students to be in the standard space, and then students are generally graduating to supported classes at the college prep or even accelerated levels, and supported either with an IA or a co-teacher. And so it made sense to, you know, in line with our portrait of the graduate, really, to have students have that a little more independence, and we're seeing that take place already. So it's reflecting the current reality as well. Study skills and academic support are essentially the same thing, so we deleted academic support and refined our study skills course to reflect what's happening in the class right now. And then our wellness classroom, there was some antiquated language like ballroom dancing that was removed, because we're not teaching ballroom dancing right now with our wellness classes. And then the MVP course, we are shifting that, and the mentors in violence prevention will be a portion of the sophomore health and wellness class, not a class unto itself. We're finding that we need to kind of freshen that up for students, and there's so much more that students need to be exposed to, and so it's a portion of the class, a unit in the class. So that's a shift. And then the other department that had its entire program shifted was our world language. And again, they have probably the newest standards that were finally, finally, finally adopted by the state, and they found it much easier to just generate new wording rather than trying to do the blue and the red, because the changes to those standards are truly revolutionary to a proficiency model, rather than the rote memorization and, you know, drill and practice. So it, they felt that it was much easier to create an entirely new course of study for world language. And then we are, I'm very excited to say, looking in a pilot way to add Portuguese I as an option for students as well. We have a native speaker who has spearheaded this, so we're really excited. And that is the program of studies.
Great.
And Michelle, so thank you, and I'm happy to take a few questions.
Fantastic. Any questions?
I think you might have answered it with a native speaker line there, but do any of these changes have an impact on staffing?
No.
Awesome. And in my honored request to expanded applicants, what is DECA?
Oh, you're going to make me remember that. It's a business club, and I'm forgetting the name of, what the acronym stands for. Essentially, what our students do is prepare either papers or presentations in the business world and present to professionals. So they're either doing a sales pitch for a company, they are in sports and leisure, or they're in hospitality and hotel, and then they're charged with coming up with a sales pitch to solve an issue in that area. So we have competitions at the local level, the regional level, so we've done that, and we're preparing, we have over 100 students, I want to say 100, around 130 students qualified to go to states in Boston at the competition there in March. And then we always have students qualify for the national, the national competition, and I'm forgetting where that was last year, I think it was in Atlanta. Superintendent Downing, do you have the name of DECA up or no?
Not the correct one.
No.
I've actually Googled this before. It's not easy to find, and I dead-ended and then got distracted. But suffice to say that DECA is one of the most prolific organizations in our high school. I know that my kids participate in it.
Yep.
Roman is going to be going in the state competition, I'm very excited to say.
Find out.
Yeah, you found it?
Distributive Education Clubs of America.
There we go.
That's terrible. It's why it's called DECA.
I've been told that our branch, our student branch, our... I've been told that our branch, our student branch or chapter, which is award-winning, is perhaps the second largest in the state.
Over 200 students participate in the program and the classes this year. So the fact that we have two educators on staff, that we need two educators because that number of students are participating in DECA is quite impressive.
Go ahead, Amy.
I had a question actually about, I guess, the kind of scope and sequence. I was curious with the math and the science, particularly like with, we're looking at like senior year calculus and physics, there's only like accelerated or AP. There's no honors level. And I was wondering about that. That seems like, I mean, what if a kid, you know, wants to take it but is not really wanting AP and they want more, I guess I'm just curious about that.
I have to pull up the, let's start with math. If you look at the honors level course sequence, so there's honors, how our math department has broken up their course sequences by level. So honors level, starting in grade nine, algebra two and trig, and then all the way up to AP, students can, sort of, the thought is that honors at the senior year is the equivalent of an AP in terms of rigor. And that's been longstanding at Neshoba. What I would say to the committee here is that as part of our curriculum review cycle and as part of the strategic plan, we are taking a look at levels. So this is definitely a topic of conversation. But in, you know, in terms of how Neshoba has in past practice, the level of rigor at the honors level senior year for those math classes, my staff would argue is equivalent to AP, which is why we offer AP. And in ninth grade, we have physical science and then we also have physics offered at the ninth grade level. So it then again would repeat if students wanted to pursue greater and deeper physics learning with our AP physics offerings, either in 11th or 12th grade. And again, we are across the board taking a look at our levels as part of the strategic plan as well as the school improvement plan and within our curriculum review cycle. So you may indeed see some changes down the road on that, but at this juncture, we're really looking at curriculum.
Okay, so thank you.
Thank you.
You say you're looking at the levels, so my question was about that. Is accelerated and college prep currently taught separately?
It depends on which department and which class. So in some cases, they are in a single class. And you'll have students at the college prep and accelerated levels in a single class. And in some subject areas, though, they are split. But we've, the school, our school began a process of kind of collapsing or combining levels several years ago, took a little bit of a pause over COVID. And we are kind of re-exploring what our leveling system looks like. So you'll see more delineation in our math-science and a few more opportunities. And if you take a look at the program, you'll see some where it says CP and accelerated, the same, that's where, that's English and social studies. It's a little bit more collapsed than in our math and science. But that's the very question that we're taking a look at.
It begs the question, what's the distinction between accelerated and college prep?
Our teachers are differentiating within the classroom for those students.
As far as, so it's more rigor, does it make a difference on a transcript? I mean, you know, what's the reasoning behind having differentiated levels between college prep and accelerated?
That's the question that we're discussing right now. So I don't have an easy answer for you because we are deep in that conversation.
I think Mr. Powell is asking the very questions that when we went through our process to construct the strategic plan last year and we were bringing in data sets from people that had thoughts and opinions about our levels, we recognized we got work to do on leveling. And so we made the strategic decision of addressing course curriculum first. And then I believe we're going to be getting into the leveling conversation following that up. So we recognize that as an area that needs some clarity, needs some definition. We also need to examine, does our leveling system offer opportunity? Does it restrict opportunity? How does implicit bias and teacher recommendation impact students' access to courses? These are all things that we need to find out about and ask questions about. So that's going to be part of the work that we get into. Look forward to hearing more about that in the next school year as we have a pretty full agenda at the moment.
Any other questions about the course studies?
I was wondering what defines low course enrollment? I was just surprised to see some of the science as low course enrollment.
Yeah, I'm looking historically at courses with 10 or fewer. That would be something that we would consider to be low enrollment.
Could you explain a little bit more about the two here? Biology, what's behind that thought process or what changes that?
Right, so truly looking at a small group of students who are presenting a variety of potential academic struggles. And where the two-year biology sequence came in is that with science MCAS being a requirement, our students currently take the biology MCAS. And then with the two-year sequence, they refine, or we're piloting, this is a pilot this year, that students would have two years to prepare for the biology MCAS, really kind of having the curriculum spiral through, so just needing a little bit of extra time. And then biology is the only science MCAS that allows for a retest. So if they were to move to a physics class, you know, so we're really looking at preparation for students to successfully achieve that graduation benchmark, which is a passing score on the science MCAS.
So is that the physical science class? Is that where the second year of biology is being?
No, physical science is still being offered.
All right.
So this is a highly specialized class, really for students who we feel need that extra time to really learn biology content.
Where does it show up on this chart? Like as the second year of biology?
You may have found something that we need to fix.
You're good at that.
No, sorry. Because you have what's written in the descriptions and then in the chart itself. You should see it if you go up to the chart. I have it in blue, right there. It's the, okay, so it is there, human perspectives and ecological perspectives. So really focusing on the human body in year one and then ecology in year two and the environment in year two.
Would year one be in grade nine?
Year one would be in grade nine.
Okay, so that's where, so that part needs to move over to the ninth grade.
Yep.
Thank you. That solves that mystery for me.
Thank you.
Just, I caught sort of a tail end because I was trying to process something. That course is listed at page 60 in the document that was posted as part of materials. It is there.
Yep.
I don't know if that's what you were asking for.
I think it's just showing up under, there's two showing up under grade 10 and one of them should be in grade nine.
I see.
I'll go ahead, Karen.
It's not directly related to the program of studies, but with the MCAS, is biology the only science MCAS option that the kids?
There's a physics option that's incredibly, you know, it's, that's, we don't, we don't, our students take biology in 10th grade, but there is a physics option. There's also a chemistry option that the state is phasing out. It's not a very widely taken MCAS at all for a variety of different reasons. And then the only one, so if a student sits for a physics MCAS and does not pass, they can take a retest, but the retest is only offered in biology. That's the only one that the state offers multiple iterations of for a science test or assessment.
And so if they were to choose the physics MCAS?
We don't offer physics MCAS at the high school. We are strictly biology. There may be an exception if a student moves in and is grade 10 and is, was, you know, enrolled in a physics class. You know, we make those exceptions, but students who are with us at Neshoba, they take the biology MCAS.
I have a quick question for you, and that is, can you just remind the community how their students accomplish the civic action project graduation requirement that is for current juniors and below?
Yes. And in our social studies curriculum, it's in all US history two classes where all students are required to complete a civics engagement project. They design a plan of action typically, well, it can be about a local issue, it can be about a regional issue, it can be about a global issue. But within the curriculum in that US two class, they identify an issue that they want to dig into and they then create a service project that is related to that issue and present to their peers. So it is a share out of presentation. And I know that John French would like to scale this up and have it be more sort of community presentation as well and outreach to members of the community who might have an interest in whatever issue the students are looking to explore and create a civic action project around to either conduct in-person and, you know, first-person research or interviews, things like that. So we're looking to have it be something that students would be able to engage with the community about.
And I think, so the US world two class is the sophomore class?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Junior.
Okay, so they do that in their junior year?
Junior year.
So you probably catch the vast majority of our graduates. But what about kids who move here as seniors? Have you guys considered how you?
We haven't talked about that yet, but, and I don't know, Laura, maybe in your conversations with John, I'm not sure if you have. John French and I have not spoken about that yet, but I think you raise a good point. Although our students, yeah, no, it's, not all students, I mean, our students have to take three years of a history. Most of our students do take four psychology or a social science. Psychology is a hugely popular senior elective senior year. So you've given me some food for thought to come back and talk to John. I don't know if you and he have talked about it, not yet, not yet. It's still relatively new. This was just, you know, adopted and put into the program of studies just last year with the state requirement. Students do have some practice with this type of thing with our, with our history day projects as well, which is in younger grades, other than grade 11, they get practice with some of these skills that then hopefully they're able to apply in a little more depth with the civic action project.
Right. And that includes AP US history as well, that we're doing it as well?
Yes.
Like after their exam or something?
That's my understanding.
Any other questions about the program of studies? Amy?
I'm sorry to keep this going longer. I know we have a heavy agenda, but when you were talking about how we students take the MCAS, the biology MCAS, and not the physics, the physics one is not offered, I was confused because I think I've asked a question before about the way that our math and science curriculum is offered at Neshoba. We offer physics first to freshmen. And I thought that that was related to MCAS, the physics MCAS test. So is that something that is being explored?
Offering physics MCAS, not?
No.
Or?
The order in which the classes are offered at Neshoba?
Yeah, I think it is, I think as we get.
We're taking the biology MCAS.
I think as we get our departments in coordination with teaching and learning on that curriculum review cycle, I think it's absolutely appropriate to take a look at our course sequencing in certain areas. That has to be part and parcel to that curriculum review process. And each department will be, and subject area will be placed on its own sort of place on the cycle to do just that. Right now, not yet, because we're, it's newly rolled out. Laura was able to share the curriculum renewal cycle several school committees ago. So we're in the process, you're with your team in the process of placing those content areas where they will be in order of priority on that renewal cycle.
I can add, if I may, of course, that science in particular is entering phase one of the process next year.
Okay, great, thank you.
And then to Sharon.
Not to belabor the MCAS question, but I do wonder, both of my older children took a different MCAS for science, engineering?
Yeah, that's not offered any longer.
Which is not offered any longer, but it was a good option. Kids that are not biology kind of kids and they did well in that engineering, I'm wondering if that might be something to consider or?
I don't believe the state is offering that any longer.
But in terms of the other MCAS options, and I can't say that I know that much about the MCAS science options and I've never been an MCAS fan, but I wonder about that. My kids did better on the math-based.
There's two, physics and bio.
That's it. With bio is the only one with a retest.
MCAS is always undergoing lots of review and scrutiny currently now, very much so with the new governor, so we'll see where it goes. All right, thanks, Dr. Boynton, really appreciate that.
Thank you all very much.
Hard work.
Appreciate it. Have a wonderful evening.
Contain respect for her hard work.
I will.
All right, everybody, so we're going to continue on with our new business here. We are still kind of on time, more or less. And we're going to go toward the superintendent formative evaluation professional development. And I'll rely on Laura to pull up that presentation. The personnel subcommittee has, as one of its goals, to provide you guys with regular training, albeit short, as we move through the evaluation process. So some of us, being educators, are really familiar with this process. Others who have been on the committee for multiple years are also familiar with the process, some of us are brand new. And what we did find in surveying the committee is that there really is a range of experience here in the room. So we tried to strike the middle here and give you guys just what you need and some more. So I'm going to turn it over to our personnel subcommittee chair, Mr. Horish, and you can kind of kick it off.
Sure, thank you. And as is sort of the unspoken protocol at these meetings, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to present tonight in front of the school committee.
I know that slide deck posted.
Yeah, sad news.
I have it right here.
We got this yesterday afternoon, so it didn't get posted in the materials, but I just did share it with Ms. Friend and she can, I just shared it to your email. So your slide deck will go over.
He's got a Mac though.
So it will pop up because I can, okay, let me just sort of set the table a little bit. Some of you who have been on this committee in the past have had some of these trainings before. And my understanding is that they are tailored to the experiences of the school committee members and their familiarity. We kind of took a fresh approach and it seems that the variety of experiences with this formative assessment and the summative assessment is actually an asset. We had people who have never participated in the evaluation and we've also had a couple of individuals.
You need to share your data with Ms. Friend.
I have it up.
I just sent it to you. I can continue. We did send out a survey and the survey was, our goal was to get full participation of all 11 members. We did not get full participation. We did not get full participation. And even though this is a training for the formative assessment or for the summative assessment, I think it's really important for everyone to understand that full participation ultimately represents the single voice of the school committee, and so I would strongly encourage that everyone participates, particularly as we get closer and closer to the summative assessment. We can move to the third slide? Yeah, right there, perfect. I also want to, we will eventually be posting this, but I want to make sure that we understand that part of the goal of presenting or crafting this presentation was to allow this to be a teaching tool as well as a resource. And the very last slide, not that you need to go to the last slide, but you'll notice that the very last slide is a link to some important documents, so you will have access to that. For those of you who have already taken the charting the course through MASC or have just been on the committee, you know that the school committee has three primary roles, to oversee and approve the annual district budget, to develop district-wide policies, and then to hire and review the superintendent. So this evaluation process, even though this is formative assessment, as it says on the slide, this is not simply our charge, simply our responsibility, this is our charge, this is what we were elected to do. This is one of the three big ones. And further, there are lots of ways to impact student outcomes in a district. There is hiring and firing of school personnel, there is issuing school improvement plans and goals, there is crafting a budget. None of those are within our purview and would be a gross overstep if we decided to do that. This, however, represents the smallest distance between the school committee and students. This is our opportunity to make the biggest impact in student outcomes, and that is the assessment and evaluation process. You can go to the next slide. So you'll notice that this is a five-step cycle. You've probably seen this diagram before. There is the map telling us where we are. We're in February, so we're doing the formative assessment. You'll recall that, I think it was September 12th, we approved the superintendent's goals. The plan was implemented immediately. Here we are in February to sort of check in, and then we have a timeline that will allow us to get to the summative evaluation, which happens in May. And the self-assessment is curiously up there, but Superintendent Downing issued the self-assessment in April. I think it was issued at April 6th. So I think there's a little bit of like maneuvering that can happen between the summative evaluation and self-assessment, but this is all part of a constant cycle. Next slide. Okay, so there are two roles, obviously. There is the superintendent, and then there's the school committee. The superintendent's role at this part of the five-step evaluation cycle is to present the school committee progress towards the goals that were approved in September and how they link to strategic initiatives and the strategic objectives. And the role of the school committee is to sort of process this and really ask questions to evaluate whether we feel that the superintendent is on the right track towards meeting those goals by May or if there is a need for course correction. So again, this is our opportunity to provide feedback that the superintendent can implement in order to impact student outcomes. So I can't really overemphasize the importance of this process and our role in this process. Next slide. Quick graph that was pulled from the survey that was issued in December and then submitted by the 16th. I think at the time, 90% of the school committee reported the understanding of how the goals were related to the strategic plan. My sense is that now we probably have 100%. I think the superintendent has done a really good job of providing updates and rationale for everything that we do in this district and how they are connected to the faculty, administration, the school committee, and community-fed strategic plans. So that's just my sense. And I think I'm going to pass this now to Ms. Coler.
Okay. So this part of the presentation is just to remind the committee about Desi's requirements for the superintendent evaluation. So Desi has four standards that it requires ratings, that we provide ratings for of the superintendent. One is, the first one is instructional leadership, second one is management and operations, third one is family and community engagement, and the fourth one is professional culture. These standards are further broken down into indicators, and I think that we might have those linked on our last slide so that people can dive into that if they want. Within each one of those standards, the superintendent has kind of, with the input of the Personnel Subcommittee, identified which indicators he's focusing on this year. We approved those earlier, as Mike showed. The SMART goals that Desi requires us to set also include a professional practice goal and a student learning goal. And then we've chosen to take two of our, between two to four, I forget exactly how many, was it two this year? We're required to choose between two and four, and we've identified two of our district improvement goals to tie into this year's assessment cycle. So this is just kind of reminding us of how we are required by the Department of Education to form these goals. Next slide, please. This is a really nice summary for all of you to try to get it all on one page of what the goals that have been set this year are. And it took some time for our Subcommittee to kind of put this in such a succinct slide, and hopefully when we sit down, when each of us sits down to do our individual superintendent evaluations, this slide will be really handy. It outlines each one of the goals I just mentioned on the previous slide, and I'm not going to read them, but it's here for your reference. Is there anything else that needs to be said about that? Okay. Am I handing off to? No, I think this is the last slide that I'm presenting on. So the circles here on this slide represent the focus indicators chosen by Superintendent Downing and approved by the Personnel Subcommittee. So you can see here that the four standards that I mentioned earlier have, these are the indicators under each one of those standards, and the ones that are circled are the ones that pertain to this year's evaluation cycle. And each time that we go through this cycle, there's an opportunity to choose different indicators to focus on. But these are directly tied into the strategic plan that Superintendent Downing has put together, and these are the ones that we will be looking at work that's been done this year to evaluate progress towards. Next slide, please.
It's me.
Okay. Going to hand it off to Chairperson Viverito.
Hello. So just so that you guys understand, when you guys are going to rate the superintendent's performance and progress toward his goals, the rubric that you're going to use uses this rating standardization. So it goes from unsatisfactory to needs improvement to then proficient and then exemplary. And so you're going to have to rate his performance in this way. So it is a rather regimented system, but it provides the superintendent with a lot of feedback on areas for improvement or places that he's doing fantastic and should continue to replicate. It is noted by Desi that proficient is actually the goal. Proficient is the goal. And new superintendents, it is said in the regulations, that it is perhaps even not recommended that a new superintendent would reach exemplary in any category, although last year he did. So this is done every single year for new superintendents. Anybody who's in their first three years as superintendent must use a one-year cycle. After that third year, we will move to a two-year cycle, just FYI. So, you know, Superintendent Downing is in his second year here, so he's starting to break through this mold. If you are to rate the superintendent at exemplary, it really does mean that he could act as a role model to other superintendents in the state. And I will not so humbly say that I think that you are already there in many ways. So, you know, don't feel afraid to give him this rating. I'm just telling you what Desi is putting it out there. It's kind of the bane of most educators' existence, but any educator will tell you that, you know, they work toward exemplary, that they're told, that the evaluator is told not to give it. So, you know, feel free to do as you see fit. Okay, next slide. So we built this rubric for you. For those of you guys who have done this before, this rubric is not new, and so if you click on that, this might look familiar to you, and Laura, if you could just kind of slowly scroll to page one, you guys will all get this form, and this is, by the way, something that you're going to use in May. This is the summative evaluation form, but ultimately the formative evaluation is just a step toward the summative. So you should keep this kind of in mind when listening to Superintendent Downing's presentation, which is next. So the first section here is color-coded for you so that you can see that this is the goals section, and as Amy and Mike have said, he has four goals that he's established and that we've already approved. So you can see that the evaluation system is a little bit different for the goals, where it talks about, you know, some progress, much progress, et cetera. So you guys will have to kind of use your judgment to see what evidence he presents that demonstrates progress toward these goals. And then the second part here is where we move toward meeting the standards. And what we've done is just put the indicators, those eight indicators, that we are focusing on. And so in standard one, we only have indicators 1A and 1C. Okay, so you can keep scrolling more, thank you. Yep, and then you're asked to give commentary, of course, because your words are much more powerful than a checkbox, and as we go down, you'll see that the four standards are represented in the yellow highlights.
Leah, can I just?
Please do.
Add something briefly?
Yeah.
I think our intent with showing this rubric right now was that members could click on that and be viewing it as superintendent is giving his speech, but this hasn't been posted to the meeting materials, so a speech, I don't know, presentation?
Has the meeting materials in the superintendent?
No, no, no. You're not getting great.
I've added those to the report.
So if you guys.
When I saw that it was in slide deck, I added it to my report, so it's going to be on the report as well.
If we go to the superintendent's report, the link is there?
Yeah, from my link. Oh, she posted the PDF form, so those updates will be in it, I see.
Oh, got it.
So we can probably just email this to members or something?
I'm going to actually share it with everybody. So it'll be sent in an email to you. So as soon as this presentation, or my part is over, I'll send it to you guys. So then, yeah, like this is a reference tool for you guys to use, because this is the, this is what Superintendent Downing is shooting for, is to meet these, you know, reach proficiency in each of these four standards. And so Laura, if you could scroll down just a second to the last part there, there's a different highlight color. So this is kind of the end-all be-all, and this is the overall rating. So, you know, ultimately, guys, you are each going to fill out this report. The chair of the Personnel Subcommittee then takes all of your 11 reports and creates a collated version that tries to capture all of what you all said into one version. And so that one version is then brought to a school committee. The superintendent happens to be the only employee of the district whose evaluation is fully public. Congratulations.
Such an honor.
Such an honor. And so in that last meeting of the school year, or rather, of the school committee's term, we will all read Mike's, what do we call it?
Summitive?
His summative.
The aggregate.
Aggregate report of our 11 reports, and we will debate it in that public session. And so this is meant to give you an opportunity to give Mike feedback on what you want the report to say. It's very important that all 11 of us complete it. It will be based upon the evidence that Kirk has provided all year long and will provide in his formative and summative presentations.
And the individual reports are not made public, is that right?
Correct. They are public documents, but they do not land in the meeting materials.
So.
Yeah, and then the aggregate report with the summative rating is sent to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education and filed away under Mr. Kirk down. So Laura, you can get rid of the rubric and go over, back to the presentation and go to the next slide.
Oh, sorry. Can I ask a question on the rubric?
Sure.
So in there, we're rating on the, we're rating on the goals and the indicators?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. And so the goal rating and the standard ratings, you in your mind, and to the best of your ability and your judgment, you decide what the overall rating should be based upon that.
Okay.
Tonight, we're just listening and providing verbal feedback.
Yeah, so the formative assessment, excuse me, the formative evaluation is designed to just be a checkpoint for Kirk largely, for us to provide him with feedback, to say, you know, oh, we're not seeing this very much, you know, perhaps you are going to need to provide us with more evidence on this particular standard, et cetera. He is going to be presenting primarily on his goals tonight, and then the standards are kind of embedded in all of that goal work. And the summative presentation that he gives in May will be a much more comprehensive presentation where he basically reminds us of all the things he's been doing all year long. Okay, so, I'm sorry, Laura, again, thank you. You can go to the next slide. So this is our timeline. As you can see, we are in February, and we are engaged in this first step or fourth step of the cycle. And in April, we will have Kirk come to us with his summative presentation. And then you have these various May dates, which are actually very important, and we need to hold to them. So on the 10th, sorry, I can't see, the superintendent shares his summative report to us. Oh, the training is going to happen in April. Then Superintendent Downing will present to us in May, on May 10th. May 17th, your individual evaluations are due to Mike. By the 22nd, PSC will write the composite evaluation report, and then on the 24th, which is our last meeting, we will have this on the agenda to vote on that composite report.
And the reason why that's so critical, so we can get it done before the next organizational meeting, right? So that was tricky this last time.
Yeah, and so any of us who might be not running for reelection, et cetera, right? Like the election cycle actually creates a lot of difficulty for this process. I want you to know that the new regional agreement is not approved in any way, shape, or form, but seeks to amend the term length of school committee members to make sure that our terms do not expire before this evaluation cycle is complete. Because we, there's no use in having brand-new members roll onto the committee and then vote on the superintendent's evaluation. There's only one charter, and that's Stowe's Charter, that has language preventing this from happening, and the Stowe Charter Review Committee has received feedback from me to alter that part of our charter. And so all of this work is being done simultaneously. But, so on the 24th, I believe it is possible that we could have new members on the committee, and we're just going to have to work with that as best we can. All right, next slide. So this, like Mike said, is just your resources slide, and any of the things that you might need can be found in here. And so I wonder if you can share this with the committee? And so that is the end of our formative evaluation training. I wonder if anybody has any questions for us beyond what Sarah's been asked?
Yeah, sure.
I just have a question about where this resource will live, so that. I just have a question about where this resource will live, so that.
In the meeting materials.
Okay, and so one of the goals of the communication committee was to try, or subcommittee was to try and find a way that those could be easily accessed by new school committee members as they come on. So I guess that's something we still have to work on.
Well, I think it was just shared too, so it'll be in a Google Drive, right?
Yeah, so, but you're talking about kind of this dream we have of warehousing valuable information beyond the meeting material bottomless pit.
Yes, so that for future school committee members or for, you know, anybody in the community that happened to want to learn about it, that there was a place where they could find it.
Is there a way for the school committee to have a Google site?
Or just a page on the website?
A page on the website that we had ability, this may, this is, maybe this is a future agenda item, but that would be a way.
So for now, this is available to you guys in all of your email, I believe. So you can check your email if you want to open up the rubric while Kirk is presenting his formative evaluation. But in the future, I would really love for those subcommittees to continue to brainstorm and work with Kirk on the ATG rollout and see how we can kind of find a little corner of that world for us. All right, great. Any other questions about the training?
Just to head off, Shando's question, SMART stands for specific, measurable, attainable, relevant in time.
You already, did you know that one already?
I know many of these, I just, you know, as a matter of practice.
Did everyone get it?
I didn't get the email.
Yeah, I didn't get it yet.
Nor did I.
All right, everybody, so with all of that in mind, we're going to move to our next agenda item, and that is to give Kirk some time to provide us his formative evaluation And I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate it. You know, when I decided I wanted to be a superintendent, my mother asked me why, and I said, because I get to be evaluated publicly, and that sounds like a fantastic experience. That was what I dreamed of, so.
Were you five at the time?
So, thank you, and I hope I don't disappoint the committee in this way, but actually, the presentation of the data in front of you tonight is probably going to be shorter than the presentation of what you're going to do with it. And that's because the reality is intentionally, and to be transparent in all of our work and tie it back to our strategic plan, I've been giving you an evaluation update every two weeks in these school committee meetings. So this formative evaluation has been happening every single meeting that we've been in. And what we've been able to do is just sort of put it together in a way so that you can access all the information in an easy way. So it looks like Ms. Friend has the memo up here, so I'll just kind of speak to the memo a little bit. First of all, you know that the goals were presented back at the September 14th meeting. Scroll down, please. Do you have the Google Doc version?
Could I have to link?
Yeah. It's the same superintendent report you wrote the business update in, Ross. The PDF link was put in there as opposed to the Google Doc link, and I want to show you, upon reading the presentation that the subcommittee put together, I added some additional material to the superintendent's report to tie the two together. So there's no change in the content in the superintendent report, just some links to that. Mr. McCarron?
I have it right here, if you'll just hand me the quarter.
I'm almost there. Is it the Google sheet that's got two tabs?
No. No, but that's the link.
While we're waiting, the second link in your report does not share a public link.
Yeah, there's a few that aren't, but that's a quick fix.
There shouldn't be two links.
September 14th, 2020, NRSE meeting link.
That one, that one is, the 28th, to me, is not, the 12th is not.
Oh, in the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but that's a good fix.
I'll correct those, yeah. That's making a public view on that.
I have the same issue that you have on the September 14th.
Right, right. We'll, it's, we've got to convert those to the public link views. All right, so in that way, as you come down, you'll see, just like the presentation you saw, the student learning goal and professional practice goal are outlined here in the superintendent's report, along with the four strategic objectives in our strategic plan. And so what I've done is I've taken the table that you just saw in that presentation to show, scrolling to the table, then standard one, curriculum assessment, are the real focus goals for this year's evaluation cycle. Standard two, it's our environment, human resources management and development. Standard three, it's around family and community engagement. So how are we engaging with our community? Community and the communication channels that we have with them. Standard four is around our professional culture, again, communication being the key, and also developing that shared vision. So below that, I took the same language to the standards and added them to this document as well, so you can just refer directly to that information. I thought it would be good to add that to the public, so it just is in one spot as well. So no new information, it's the same stuff that's in the PowerPoint presentation that the subcommittee just gave to the full committee here. If we can scroll up, Ms. Friend?
Still may.
Oh, Mr. McCarron has it all the way to the top, please. And click on the link here. So as you click into this, this is the NRSD strategic plan update. And when you look at this update, the way it is organized is the school committee agendas run across the top of each of the school committee dates. Just stay right there at the very first column, please. And then as you scroll down, you'll see, on September 14th, we presented the website redesign, the common, the superintendent's weekly update, and the school newsletters. And it directly relates to the strategic initiatives in the strategic plan. So in every one of the school committee updates that you get, it cites the objective and the strategic initiative for which it addresses. So as this matrix is filled in throughout the year, scrolling to the right, you'll notice that as we come along, we will, I'll be filling in the updates with each one of the school committee meetings up until the time of the summative evaluation. In addition, any presentations that were given, but not specifically within the school committee report to the school committee on that evening, have been linked in. So if we look at the, for instance, on October 20, October 12th, the PPS professional development calendar was put in, that directly relates to developing a professional learning community culture across all schools, departments, and grade houses. Also, highlighted, you will see in red text there, that is directly related to the student learning goal of developing and invoking the curriculum. So all you have to do is look straight across that line as evidence towards that student learning goal. And in domain four, as we talked about, the human resources professional practice goal of attracting and retaining high-quality educators and educators of color for our school system, that is cited as we scroll down to domain four, highlighted also in red, and so we would look across there. So I'll tell you where we are right now with our goals. We've done, in terms of those two goals, we've done a lot more work and have reported back to you extensively around the curriculum efforts that we've been making. We haven't reported as much back to you in terms of recruiting, hiring, and retaining a highly qualified staff. Well, that makes sense because we're just now getting into what is going to be the hiring season. So you're going to see more and more reports about the efforts that we're making to do that. So for instance, we'll be coming back to talk to you about the job fairs we'll be attending. And we're going to talk, I just mentioned this evening, some of the work we're doing around implicit bias training for our interview committees and with our principals, and you'll have more information in that regard. So in that way, you get to see, these are our four goals. The yellow box is the goal. So if you see, that's where the goal language is for human resources, facilities, and finance. So same goal language in the others, and all the work that's been done in that area. Our, the professional practice goal and the student learning goal don't stand alone. They come from the strategic plan. So it's to say, what are the things that specifically I am engaging in and integrating with relative to the strategic plan in student learning and professional practice? So the way I'm doing that through curriculum is working directly with Ms. Friend on a weekly, or daily basis, frankly, on all the curriculum work that's being done around the system, and then the work that I'm doing with Ms. Stoica in human resources around hiring, retention, and development of our faculty and staff in the school system. So what I hope I've done for you is been able to just organize the data in such a way to where you just have to click in the fields to view it to remind you, yes, that was the curriculum audit presentation that we received on November 20th, or that was the budget workshop presentation that was given on January 18th, as the evidence towards the development of those goals. So what I'll do is, we'll go through and just make sure all those were public. I went through it the other day, but it sounds like a few of the links weren't turned on to public to view, and we certainly want that, because they were posted in our school committee agendas, and my guess is they were posted, like we've discovered tonight, as PDF files, not as the Google Doc public links. So with that, I'll just take any questions from the committee and any suggestions on what would be helpful you to understand more about how to look at that evidence as it relates to the goals this year and the performance standards. I guess my question for the committee is, does the methodology of laying it out in the matrix there, is, does that organize or present itself in a way that's easy for you to access and get the information?
I think it's a great house. The summative presentation will be different. It will be in the form of that rubric, where Kirk will fill that rubric out for you to provide a bit of a self-assessment that we will then use to evaluate against our own impression. But I think that this is a, for me, this is a lot to process, but it's very well organized and very easy to kind of navigate. What do you think, Mike?
I just have a comment and a question. The first thing is that it took me a bit, but if you look at slide eight of the personnel subcommittee presentation, it outlines the superintendent's goals. On the right-hand side are the district improvement goals and the language for each of those goals. They're located on the spreadsheet in the straw-colored heading at the top. So that's how you're making the connection between what was on that slide and what's on each of the sections on the spreadsheet. I don't know how many of you, it took me a minute or two to figure that out, because we didn't really title them as connections and communication. We identified them as the actual strategic objective. And then my other question is, this will, I assume that this will be, continue to be populated over the course of the remainder of the school year?
Yes.
And so will we be getting, will this be a passive document where we'll have ongoing access, or will we be bringing this up and you will be referring to it?
Ongoing access. It's live, it's public, and we're just adding to it as we go meeting to meeting.
I really appreciate a spreadsheet whenever there's an opportunity for one, so thank you for that. But I'm trying to, I kind of was following Mike's process with putting together our slides with this spreadsheet, and I think I still haven't quite wrapped my head around the circled indicators on slide nine and how they jive with some of the rows on the scripts.
Yeah, that's where the role of the evaluator is. So when you look at, Mr. McCarron, can you slide down to one of the standards? So keep going. So for instance, curriculum. Here's the descriptors of curriculum, right? Now, it also happens, curriculum is my student learning goal. Now, as we go over to the spreadsheet, so monitors, assesses the progress of the curriculum, right? Well, in our strategic objectives, teaching and learning, number one, engage and audit just like curriculum conductor, curriculum audit. So that's where you look at the descriptors, and you, as an evaluator, say that matches that. This is the evidence for that.
Got it.
I think that for novices at this process, making it a little bit more obvious or color-coded to say, would be helpful, just so that we don't have to go fishing and then we don't miss something that you have, that you have volumes of information, but we just miss it because we didn't make the connection. So syncing up the language as much as you can is probably the idea. Maybe even creating a column to the left.
With those indicators?
With those indicators.
Saying which indicator you think it's going with, I think that would help, that kind of.
That would be helpful. And did you say that the red text are the goals? The student learning goal?
Yes, the red text is my student learning goal and professional practice.
Professional practice goal. So that column might contain that coding as well, just so that we don't miss anything.
Or maybe shading that box in.
Yeah, whatever, like, key you want to create to make sure that the rubric and the spreadsheet sync. So because what we're looking for, guys, remember, Kirk has developed a professional practice goal, student learning goal, and then actually four district improvement goals. This is ambitious. We told you this a long time ago, and you did not shy away. And then on top of it, you have the four standards. Within those four standards are eight indicators. And so all of that matching would be great.
What I want to show the committee on that particular point that you're making, Madam Chair, is regardless of what year you are as a superintendent, if it's your first year or 30th, it doesn't matter for what happens out there in the school system. We have goals, we have a strategic plan, we have work to do. So the accountability that you should be holding me to is to ensure that that work of the strategic plan is what's being executed and done, because that's the mandate you all gave me last June when you voted unanimously to approve that plan. So as we look at it that way, that really is the meat of our organization, and how you choose to evaluate, that is at the liberty of you, the committee, to do that. So I applaud our efforts to align those requirements to DESI, as we have to report, you know, the goals and the ratings according to the performance rubric to DESI. So, but really, what we're looking at is, are we executing the work of our strategic plan? And then can we correlate that to the bureaucratic requirement of those standards and submission to the department? And I think that's really important for us to be thinking about, because while the standards reflect what is good practice for a superintendent across the Commonwealth, you know, it comes down to all issues are local, or we're doing the things locally here according to what we say we want to have done, and how is that being executed? I think that's just going to be an important lens for us to have as we move forward with those particular pieces. So in that way, yes, I think it's ambitious, but I don't how, I don't know how to not emphasize a part of the job when all those things are so important, you know?
We're just not going to focus on that this year.
So, but I think there's a, there's a key component here to mention and put out there is, the committee clearly pointed to me of, we want emphasis on the curriculum development, and we want it now. So we've given that to you this year, and we're trying to outline and plan a way where you see it clearly with the evidence, that you can go direct to the presentations around the curriculum development and see the tangible evidence of the night when our directors came and presented to all of you around the work that is currently being done and all the reports that Ms. Friends gives around the curriculum curation in the district. So as we focus on those things, so that's why in curriculum and assessment, we focused on the curriculum and the implementation of our Renaissance Learning as MTS, Systems of Sport. So thinking about that, it's, we're trying to stay connected to what we have said as a, what you all have said as a committee, of, these are things that are important, keep coming back, we're going to focus on those. So in that way, that's where we're really targeted, knowing we then have to address it all in terms of, across the four standards.
Mike?
I would say the strongest part and most helpful part of this document are the links. I would say the strongest part and most helpful part of this document are the links. And it really makes things, everything is sort of nested within a single document. There are some additions, I think are the ones that are written in black text that are not linked to anything in particular, but that they're mentioned. I think that to the extent that it's possible, if you could provide some color to how those things relate to the initiatives on the particular date, so for example...
You click on the date and the report's there. So when you click on the date, you're going to see the written report of Dr. Ben, Bridges in Mathematics and Renaissance Learning Launch.
Okay, so I guess then we would just have to make sure that everything is made viewable by public?
It should be said.
Oh, okay.
And what I can do is actually hyperlink even those specific places to take you back to the same.
So Kirk, you put a lot of thought and effort into how you organize this document?
Yeah.
So like color coding it and inserting links. And so I think if you put a decoder of some sort, like close to cell A1, so it's like says that the dates are hyperlinked and red means this and tan red means this, that will help us to all navigate the document better rather than having to intuit what we're supposed to be doing and understand this.
Yeah, and I heard this issue of the column left of the indicator might be a good idea as well, creating that key, the color code key, however that works. You know, when you get into too many colors, it then just kind of looks like somebody just spilled a lot of paint. So I'll be cognizant of that and explain those pieces out. But that's why we're here tonight. When I presented it to Leah, I said, I want to present it to this committee, and then you tell me how you want to see it to make it efficient for you when we get to the summit of time. So I hear that loud and clear.
Good on you. For the standards, are they going to link to one initiative or sometimes will it be like multiple initiatives?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, yeah, like curriculum's not just S1, number one right there, it's going to be.
Correct, correct, correct.
That's why I think an additional column calls out one C.
Because one thing, one strategic initiative could be multiple standards and multiple indicators and the goal. And so I actually think that's useful for you to force us to know that instead of us intuiting it like Scott said. What other questions? Anything about the substance of the work? Or I know you guys are, you've been at all these meetings and have been...
I think one thing that's hard for me to take away from this, just looking at it for the first time, is whether there are standards or goals where there are blanks, like where we're still looking for evidence or progress because I haven't been able to kind of view it as one thing. There's a lot of information in there, so is there any areas that you are, you know that you still need to fill in on this spreadsheet that you were...
Well, yeah, there's a lot.
I think what I'm saying is like, are there any areas where you are behind where you thought you'd be at this point?
No, I don't think there's any, those areas where I thought I'd be behind. An area that we need to address now, for instance, is the human resource components. It's human resources and we have some work to do there. I will say, Ms. Stoichka and I have worked diligently on revisiting all the job descriptions, and thank you for you and your office for doing that. We've talked about, you know, bringing in innovation director, those types of things. So I will be coming back to the committee with a report on that in the coming months of the efforts and work that have been done to that, to provide that evidence. So that's an example where I know it's not fully vetted at this point.
Okay.
But we'll be by May. In terms of, you know, the other elements, when we look at their curriculum forecast, the assessment forecast, to date, I think we've provided you ample evidence to show the hard work that's going on in the district with very specific examples, the model units, the model templates in terms of the curriculum, the examples of how we can utilize the data in Renaissance Learning. We will be coming back to you with a Renaissance Learning report in the not-too-distant future here as we just, we'll be finishing up our second benchmark window soon, and we'll be coming to you with that 30,000-foot look of data across the school system and how we can use that to kind of indicate how students are performing. So there are more things to come in those areas, but I would say they're timing and on track.
Okay. I think too that we have to keep in mind, so Kirk, we're evaluating you on the goals and the standards. This spreadsheet gives us way more than that.
Yeah.
And so we also have to be cognizant of the fact that we're not evaluating Kirk on every single element of the strategic plan. That's not what we're evaluating. We're evaluating what he committed to with his six goals and then what all educators are held to, and that is the standards. So if there remain blanks even at the summit of evaluation, that might be appropriate because those are not things that were goal-oriented.
So two things I think we can do to help with the organization of that, thinking about that suggestion, looking at column B, shifting those columns to the right and column B being the superintendent indicator column, so that when you see the standard, this column would be standard 1A curriculum. Or, yeah.
Yeah.
1A, 1C.
And then...
Or you would say this strategic initiative is related to the student learning goal.
Can you do me a favor and click on the second tab as well, Mr. McCarron? So in this way, the strategic objective, this is where the strategic objectives are organized in a different way. So the second tab shows you all the evidence that's been done to those very specific strategic initiatives. So we, so I'll do it in a second. So you'll get it in the linear way across the meetings, and then I'll do the same thing, but then this is organized by strategic initiatives, so it's more condensed and in sort of that singular place you're talking about, Ms. Cohen, with the connected superintendent indicator.
Yeah. And the goal, and goal, and/or goal.
Yeah.
I think that would be really cool. I mean, like we said before, you have a lot going on. I think we can all sense that. Way more than you need to, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
I appreciate your sentiment. And need to in the sense maybe of the supervision evaluation process.
Right.
I have to for the school system. So if I have to for the school system, we're going to show it as part of the evaluation process.
Very good.
I think the second tab is helpful.
I couldn't realize it was there.
Yeah, neither did I. But I think that helps consolidate all the pieces.
It's a good tool. Few enhancements will make me easier to use, and we'll be ready to go.
You guys are on the Personnel Committee, so you probably understand the second tab, but I'm still lost on the second tab.
Second tab, more information?
Second tab, please, sorry, Mr. McCarron. So in the second tab, you'll see strategic objective number one.
Yep.
The three strategic initiatives that were focused on this year in that objective are strategic initiative 1, 2, and 3.
Because they relate to the indicators or...
Nope, strategic plan. Just the strategic plan. So the strategic initiatives in the strategic plan, these are the activities that have been reported to the school committee on the very specific items that we've done this year relative to these initiatives. Now, as Mr. Powell had indicated, adding the organization indicators, providing that key to point you now to the specific evaluation elements is the thing that could be added to that to help simplify that process for you.
Yeah. Does that make sense to you, Maureen? So like I will, I'll just interject and say that in all of my conversations with Kirk, he is endlessly focused on the strategic plan. This is a good thing. Now, as the bureaucrat that I am, I am focused on the evaluation template. And so marrying these two things is hard, but you're going to do your best to marry them.
I'll do my best.
I mean, part of it is like as a school committee, we are tasked with reporting that information to DESI in the format that they have given us, which are tied to those indicators. So...
In the regulations, they are identified as...
But as a district, we are working off a strategic plan that is guiding our work. So, you know, we didn't create a strategic plan around DESI's indicators. We created a strategic plan around the work that needs to be done that is kind of the feed, based on the feedback we received from community members and students and parents. So...
So in that way, when the Subcommittee asked me, what are the focus indicators that we should look at in the rubric, that's why those were circled and indicated because it's like, those are the ones that best match the work that we're really focused on in our plan.
Maureen?
The initiatives that are on that tab, they're the ones that action has been taken on. So there might be like, for the communication goal, there's actually four initiatives, but there's only three on the second tab because that's the action taken to date, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And the next ones are for the, I see they're highlighted for the...
Yeah. The first tab has every single solitary strategic initiative, and we can't do them all at one time. The second tab is simply the ones that we focused and have reported back on to you this year.
Oh. And that one that's like, for the support and inspire all learners goal, initiative number seven, that was actually planned to be a future initiative, but action's already been taken, so it's listed.
Yeah, it's kind of a funny thing when you go along, you find out, we're going to take some steps right now because it reveals itself to us. So that's where we, you know, sort of jump the timeline on that because it revealed the need, boy, this needs to come sooner than we actually anticipated in our planning.
Got it. Thank you.
So this is something that you're going to be working on beyond, this is a multi-year document that's going to be housing information as you're working through progress towards the strategic goals and plan.
Yeah, I'm all about making our tools useful to us in our day-to-day and not having them just be compliance activities. And so that's why I'm bringing this to the committee, because you're all going to, the feedback you've given me is going to take me back to now I'm going to work on that. You're going to see the next iteration of it. Undoubtedly, you'll have some suggestions. We go back, we tune the machine again, and we do that and get better and better at it. Till then, we have the operational document that we want year over year because it explains the work that we're doing in a transparent way. Because if there's one thing this committee told me last year is, we don't want you to say the work that you're doing, we want you to show it. And so we've been very focused this year in our school committee meetings of showing you the work, not telling you about the work, so that we can then tie it back and you have that as direct evidence towards progress of the school district and vis-à-vis the superintendent.
Any other feedback for the superintendent? So where does this document live?
That's going to be Sharon's question.
It is going to be my question.
It's a public document that's in our materials right now. So we'll take that back. Where that lives, and I know that we're thinking about how we're going to restructure our website as we roll over to Apogee. So we've had some discussions about what our transparency pages look like, and so we're going to be rolling that out. So for right now, I would save the link, and this one came across as a link in the materials.
I did.
Because I did catch this one. And so save that link, and then we'll keep coming back. So, and we'll have some opportunities to remind the committee, we've added this to our links, and we can make that a running part of the report. Click here so that you can always come back and check the brutality of the work.
So the materials for...
Yeah.
I really like this overly broad dashboard view of all this stuff, but it is a pretty big document. I don't know if you could work on freezing some of the columns or something to make it a little easier to navigate.
Condense it a little bit.
Well, not necessarily condense it, but like freeze column A.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So like when you're scrolling over, you know what the thing is. I'm finding I'm doing a lot of scrolling up to the left to try to...
I know exactly what you mean.
I have a nitpicky addition to Chandra's comment, and that is the green and tan rows that are the headers should be left justified so that...
Yeah. That was one of my first...
Sorry.
Just so you can see them on the...
Just let's justify the headers so that we can see them every now as we're scrolling.
Because they get lost when it's so wide.
They get lost around...
Yeah, yeah.
There's just too much.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, guys, anything else? All right, so we're going to move on beyond this. Thank you, Kirk, for that update, the updated update.
As you dig in and you look at some of the material, if you have some thoughts and some questions, what I would ask the committee to do is please give that information to the Personnel Subcommittee, because we will have some follow-up meetings to talk about updates on progress and what the committee wants. So please talk to Mike, and we'll move forward from there.
Great. All right, everybody. We have the, in the new business Subcommittee Goals check-in in the agenda, but if there is no objection, I would like to just leave that to the Subcommittee Report, so you guys can just wrap your check-in into the report. So let's move on to the Hail DC Trip donation. What do we know about this fantasticness?
Mr. McCarron?
Yes, thank you. We've received news from Kent Middle School and Principal Calvary that a gift donation the amount of $1,000 has been offered to Hail Middle School to support the cost of one of the eighth-grade Washington DC trips that's planned for this spring. It's intended to pay for the cost of a trip for students and families who have requested financial assistance, and this parent benefactor wishes to remain anonymous.
And so you are looking for a motion to accept this gift?
Correct. I make a motion to accept the gift in the amount of $1,000 to be offered to Hail Middle School to help to free the cost of the eighth-grade Washington DC trip.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Sharon?
I just have a question because I feel like we've done this already. Is this a second donation?
Yes, it is.
Awesome.
And the first one was for, was it Burbick or was it for Hail?
There was one for Hail.
Oh, fantastic. Okay. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Who is unanimous? Thank you very much.
Thank you to that.
Donor, donor.
Yeah, thanks to our...
We'll send our thank you card out to the ether and...
Our anonymous donor, we are very, very grateful. We would love to even have additional donors step forward. So if anybody's interested in doing that and donating to these really important causes, you can definitely reach out to Mr. McCarron's office. All right, so moving on in our agenda, we move over to the December Operations Report. I think that goes to Ross again.
Yes, it does. Thank you for the opportunity to present the December Operations Report, recognizing that we're in February. However, our January meetings were taken up and certainly the 18th meeting that was used for budget. So just a quick update, recognizing the time of the evening, we've already reviewed this with Budget and Warrant Subcommittee. Our projected balances for each of our operating budget accounts are shown on the far right with the very bottom right-hand corner, not the one highlighted in blue as that's last year FY '22 at this time, but currently where we are tracking. And very similar to our November report, as discussed with the Budget and Warrant Subcommittee and with Budget Workshop, you know, the majority of the surplus we see are due to positions that are not filled this year. However, we've reduced those in the FY '24 budget, but that's why you're seeing the surplus significantly there, particularly in the school areas. So we're unsatisfied to track to rebuild our excess and deficiency balance as we've appropriated E and D as a revenue source in budgets, certainly in FY '23, projected FY '24, and then in a significant history going back, E and D has been appropriated. So that's where we are at as of the end of December. That's the summary of what we're at.
Great. Any questions for Mr. McCarron? So, thank you to Budget and Warrant for going over this as well in your Subcommittee, and thank you to Mr. McCarron for that update on December operations. Now we can move on to unfinished business. We're going to start with the preschool extended day theme... We're going to start with the preschool extended day theme topic. We are going to take a vote on this to approve the numbers that were presented to us two meetings ago. Three meetings ago?
No, January 4th, we're on the 4th, yes, because we did not have the opportunity to discuss or vote at the 18th.
Great. So before we take a motion for this, do we have any questions? Oh, Mr. Mulcarn?
If it would be okay, just to brief the committee on an update. Based on a concern that was raised at the previous meeting with regards to extended learning before-school rates. So there was not a linear progression on the before-school rates, the way they increased. So from one, one day to two days, there was a linear progression. From two to three, there was not. There was a difference in that. From three to four, it was the same as one to two, and so on up to five days. In reviewing the voted, proposed and voted increases of rates over the last probably, I think we looked back eight or nine fiscal years, somewhere around that FY '21, '22 time, there was that change where it no longer became that linear track. That third, going to the three-day created, for some reason, there was, whatever, I'm not sure why, there was that, that change. So what I would, if, if it's okay by the committee, I would like to update the committee on where we would want to propose a different rate for that three-day before-school.
Sure.
Okay. So in keeping with the, the linear increases going, as you go up by the days that you register for, the change in three days for before-school rates, the monthly rate would go from 84.36 as proposed to 81.03. Therefore, the yearly rate would change from $843.60 to $810.30.
You're proposing a decrease?
Correct. That would be in line with the linear progression. Yep.
So is this another way of saying this, is you're just making it linear?
Correct.
If you're doing one day or five days, it's just a delay rate times how many days you're doing.
Correct. And it would eliminate that anomaly that was brought out and, and noticed, yep, at the last, at the January 4th meeting.
And you've crunched the numbers, and this is still going to be fiscally manageable for the program?
Based on where we're expecting our expenditures to be, correct.
There was, this, the new rates weren't attached. We're just basically voting to approve what was proposed, subject to the amendment just.
Correct. Correct.
All right, so we can perhaps accept a motion if Mike would like to whip his magic.
Sure, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the preschool extended day fees as presented, including the amendments presented.
I'll second that. Any discussion further?
Although, oh, all right. This isn't preschool, right? This is extended day.
This is, the, the, the proposal, the amended proposal that I just made was strictly for the before-school program for extended learning.
But we're approving two different fee schedules.
Yeah, right. Preschool and extended learning.
Should we break this up?
The motion was for preschool only.
Thank you.
Yes, that's what's happening.
Okay, so this is just for preschool. And those rates were presented.
At the same time.
At the same time.
No changes or amendments to the preschool rates.
There were no anomalies. Then.
So I'm going to retract the motion, and I'm going to put a new motion forward.
You are? Okay.
Because the, the first one included an amendment, which there was no amendment for, for the preschool, correct? It was the extended day.
Correct.
Okay. Make sense?
I seconded the motion, so I'm okay with you retracting it. Go right ahead. And remove.
Okay, I will, I will move to approve the extended day rate increases as presented, including the amendments presented by Mr. Mulcarn.
I'll second that. So this is just for extended day. Is there any discussion?
I just have a quick comment. It's a, it's a teaching moment here. Teaching moment. Not that anybody cares, but for future reference, okay? When a motion is made and seconded.
Yes.
Before the motion can be withdrawn, the chair needs to hold the entire committee. Now this, again, no one's not, no one's going to make a, think about this tonight. But for future reference with regards to, once a motion is seconded, it does not belong to the ruling party. It belongs to the body. So just for future reference, because again, no one's going to make a stink about this tonight. Just want to let you know that you have to pull the audit, pull, pull the committee before the motion can be withdrawn.
Will you tell me that next time before I get too far down the road?
I, I didn't even remember if the motion was seconded.
I love these conversations. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor about extended day with the amendment that Mr. Mulcarn just presented. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of that, raise your hand. That is unanimous. And now we need a preschool motion.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the preschool monthly rates proposal as presented.
When they were presented, when?
To.
On January 4th?
Yeah.
I think that should be specified just as a reference point.
That's presented on January 4th.
As presented on January 4th.
I will second that. Discussion? Preschool rates. All right, all those in favor, raise your hand. Students. All right, thank you very much for that. Some of the agenda says it has another extended learning bullet, but that's the same exact thing, right? No?
That's what, Mike, that's what Ross presented. So. Just a sequential thing.
It just got duplicated. We have everything.
We have everything we need to move forward, present rates to families so that they can register.
Fantastic. Great. All right, guys, so we're going to move on to our next matter, and that is subcommittee advisory reports. So just as a quick reminder, we want each subcommittee to give a brief, wrapped into your update, do your best to give a little brief update on your goals if you can. If you are not ready, we could certainly postpone until the next meeting. Feel free to say that as well.
I'm ready. I'm just discouraged by the term brief. I'll, I'll do my best.
Okay.
I'll do my best.
Budget and Warrant Subcommittee, please begin.
Okay, I hate to set the bar.
Do we have that goal spreadsheet that we could?
I'm sure it's in your drive somewhere.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Okay, so as far as the goal goes, Budget and Warrant, the goal for the subcommittee was that the regional school committee would increase accessibility to and visibility of the development of the FY '24 district budget. There were three or four action items. Just to, I will try to be brief. We've established and provided updates on the 2022, 2023 FY '24 budget timeline issued by Mr. Mulcarn. We've tried to stay true to that. We've solicited feedback about and brought transparency to the budget building process by numbers of our towns. We've organized a training issued by MASC on warrants in the process of signing off, which will lead to a recommendation on our process to the broader committee. We have taken advantage of the entry plan of Mr. Mulcarn to guide how questions about the budget are asked, how efficiencies are found within the budget, and how we respond to those. And we've ensured that the goals, initiatives, and programmatic changes are directly tied to the district's strategic plan and the superintendent's goals approved by the committee in the fall. Almost done. We've worked to issue invitations to our monthly meetings to members from all towns, including FinCon reps, town administrators, select board members, and residents that have expressed interest in specific publicly posted agenda items. And finally, we've initiated conversations about educating one another on other post-employment benefits with deeper work with the town, with towns scheduled for our spring meeting. So I would say, and other members, you can chime in as well if you have thoughts, but I would say that we are making reasonable progress towards our goal.
All right, and that was your update in total?
We, sorry, we also met for our second of two meetings last week, where we had another opportunity to ask questions about the budget, sort of like a budget debrief, which I really like that language. We have our next budget meeting scheduled for February, although the date has not been settled because I think there's conflict with negotiations, so that's forthcoming.
Okay. Thank you, Budget and Warrant. That was quite brief and informative. Over to the communications subcommittee.
Okay, so communication, our first goal was around creating a school committee newsletter. And that, we have decided that that actually would be better suited to be part of the superintendent's newsletter, so that will be coming as a portion of the superintendent's weekly newsletter. So the school committee information will be rolled into that. We also had a goal to assess the effectiveness of that newsletter through a survey in the spring. We'll have to decide how that will be done since it's not a standalone newsletter. And then the remaining goal was around collecting information that's been presented to the school committee for easy access for either the school, new school committee members or for community members. I think that this has a couple of different areas that it's going in. One is information that is more owned by the district, which I believe that we will just ask the superintendent to post that, and it will happen somehow. And then there's a second component of that, which is creating the resource for the school committee, and that is still a work in progress. And then going forward, right now, the school, the communication subcommittee is working with policy on updating the school committee handbook and with the goal of creating a more streamlined way for new committee members and also for community members to learn about and better understand the work of the school committee.
Excellent. Thanks, Sharon. And let's see here. We're going to move over to the NRHS School Building Committee update.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Since the last report, which was on January 4th, the building committee did meet on January 5th. We received a presentation from our district council regarding the provisions of General Law Chapter 71, Section 16D and N, which is the funding methodologies for our committee moving forward with this project. As you all know, on January 9th, we had public forum number five. I want to especially thank all the members of the building committee, as well as the members of this committee who were in attendance. Those who were in attendance saw our presentation by Jason Tate of the Office of Campaign and Political Finance. He gave a very tight 30-minute presentation. I think that I can bottom-line the presentation by saying that as we move forward with this project, we should rely heavily on the resources and the legal counsel of that office. I think that there's going to be a lot of questions as we move forward in this regard, and I think that his offices will be a valuable resource for our district. One of the outcomes of the public forum was that there was some initial interest by some attendees in regards to forming a valid question committee. And again, if there are those members of the public in all three communities that are interested in doing that, I would again just reiterate that it's really important that what you do and how you do it, make sure if there's any questions, call the Office of Campaign and Political Finance. In addition to that, our liaison program, which was established by Ms. Cohen and our subcommittee, is up and running. Superintendent Downing and myself appeared before the Lancaster Select Board in January. Ms. Cohen and Superintendent Downing were in Bolton, and there's also a presentation before the Stowe Select Board. Our next meeting is scheduled for next Thursday, and I think that pretty much sums it up, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Joe. Let's head over, or back over to Mr. Horace for a personnel update.
Well, you saw the bulk of the work that's been done. Just to share out our goal, the goal was to engage the school committee in the superintendent evaluation process with the hope that there's full participation and to facilitate the evaluation process by holding training sessions. So we did indeed work with the superintendent to help establish goals for the current academic year with the strategic plan as a basis for the goal-setting. We, we did provide recommendations to the broader subcommittee, or the school committee, rather, for approving superintendent goals in late September, and obviously, the superintendent has been working diligently on them since, as we just saw. And we are collaboratively building these training sessions, and we'll build a second one prior to the summative assessment. So again, I would say we are making reasonable progress towards our goal.
Excellent. Thanks, Mike. Let's go over finally to policy.
We met last Thursday, the 26th, in a joint meeting with Communication to start working on the school committee manual, and we are dividing up some sections to start working on. In terms of the goal, our goal is to review and revise policies to not only keep them up to date, but to also look at them with a lens of diversity, equity, inclusion. We haven't had a lot of opportunity yet with the policies we've done, but I think actually with the manual, there will be more opportunity for us to go a little deeper into that. So I've requested everybody to kind of have that lens as they're looking at those sections, and we'll pull back together and hopefully make some progress.
Great. Thanks, Karen. So over to our advisories. Let's check in with Audit Advisory.
No updates.
Okay, very good. Dear J?
Dear J is working, two projects they're working on right now. One is related to calendar and creating some additional language on the calendar that recognizes broader group in the community. And they are also working on resources, or being a resource for the upcoming bids for the equity.
I would make just one amendment to that through, not creating things for the calendar, they're offering recommendations for us to consider.
Thank you.
Great. And that's coming up on a future agenda, I noticed, on the planning calendar.
Yeah, it's coming up in two weeks.
Over to CPAC.
CPAC had, or there was a workshop on the 23rd for basic rights understanding, the IEP. That was a virtual presentation, and they have another one coming up on the 15th, collaborative problem solving.
Great. Okay. And so to the R-A-A-C, I did alert you guys that we are pushing out the first read to the next meeting, and we're hoping that without any glitches, we are still going to be able to get the draft into the three-town warrants. Desi is still going to have to take another look at it, but the R-A-A-C is scheduled to meet on Sunday morning at 8:00 AM to, yep, bright and early, and to kind of finalize some of that language that was still questionable to committee members. And I think that we are basically there. So that's excellent. Mr. Brian Boyle, who's a member of the committee, has also constructed a cover sheet, which is very informative. It helps not only us, but the community that will vote at town meeting, understand what has changed between the old and the new. And ultimately, the changes are not really substantive. It's, you know, really about the composition of the committee, going from eight members to 11 members, but we did change other things that just brought the agreement back into order and compliance with the law. So we'll see that on the 14th. I will provide that with lots of notice so that you can page through it. It's really only about 10 pages still, so don't feel too stressed out about it.
I have actually a request to just amend my report, but I did have a question regarding the R-A-A-C. Okay, so in regards to my report, I was remiss in not, I'm surprised that I wasn't chastised by the superintendent for this. And remiss in not reporting out that the administration has established dates for the all-important walk-throughs and tours. I'm sorry about that, Superintendent Downing. If your staff isn't working diligently on that. They've established three dates with two tours on each date, the 9th of April, the 29th of April, and the 9th of September. And the reservation forms have been posted to our social media accounts. So if you're a Facebook fan, go on Facebook, put in your time and make your reservation. It is something you really have to see. That's my amended report. Onto R-A-A-C. So February will mark now three years since we started this process. And I'm only asking this question because the, the manner in which the R-A-A-C is operated is they don't have on their agenda a public comment or citizen comment provision. So I guess my question would be, when will this have its coming-out party in regards to public comments? I had raised this issue before. I was wondering about, you know, does the R-A-A-C, is the, is the district committee going to have a public hearing on this? It is, okay.
It is.
It is going to be a public hearing.
We, yeah, so it won't be necessarily a public hearing as defined by law, but it will be an opportunity for members to, within the regular school committee meeting. like come and present kind of commentary through a kind of a public comment session. But it will be advertised as a public hearing. But it's not like a formal public hearing like the budget hearing.
No, I, okay, I think I want to get into, but I, okay, so there's going to be a...
It'll be a public comment. People should be, should feel free to come and provide their insight, anything that they think is concerning. I will say this, that by virtue of it lasting this long, we've had so many meetings. All of them are open to the public. The Zoom link is made public. Anybody can join. Nobody has, but all of the requisite members from the town governing bodies are present in the committee. It's a nice cross-section of people from select boards, FinCons, school committee, and just public, members of the public. Sharon included is attending. So they have been going back and talking to the select boards, talking to the town managers, which created a little bit of questioning in the latest round from some town, from one of our town administrators who was concerned about some of the language that we then brought back to Desi, and it's been changed to be debated at the R-A-A-C meeting on Sunday, which anyone can come and join us at and, you know, participate in.
Where are the details posted?
There's a Subcommittee on the website.
Which website?
On the district website. Yes, the only website. So I welcome everybody to attend those meetings if they see fit. What we're going to do on the 14th, because time is so tight, what we're going to do on the 14th is we are going to bring it for a first read. At that first read meeting, the public is also going to be invited to attend through the public comment section of the meeting to note any concerns that they have. And then we will move on to, hopefully, the March 1st meeting to vote on it as a committee and kind of endorse it. If the March 1st meeting is moved to the 8th, that becomes a little problematic for the warrant deadlines, but I think that the town administrators can work with us on that.
This is just a request, and I don't know if the chair would deem my request appropriate, but I would think it appropriate that when we have perhaps our first reading, that we carve out a period of time in the agenda to have a joint meeting between this committee and those members of your Subcommittee. Because I, as one member of this committee, I would really love to see, and two things I want to say. One is I trust your judgment in these regards, and my comments regarding it hasn't been, hasn't had its formal coming out. I know it's there. I know it's there. People who want to see it can go to the website and find it. I'm thinking it more from the outside of our district committee, the community. It hasn't had its formal coming out yet, you know? And I don't think a lot of people may be aware of the fact that it is going to be coming out. But I would be very keen to, and it's not unusual in public meetings to have like a joint meeting, like sometimes what we do when we fill vacancies on this committee, it's technically a joint meeting between the committee and the select boards. I would be really keen, personally, Mr. Boyle, I'd be really keen to have Mr. Boyle here. I know he's been instrumental in this, and I'll leave it to the discretion of the chair, but that's, would be, I don't think it would be inappropriate to have the full committee here to formally present what they've been working on for the last three years.
We can definitely invite them. I don't think that that would be a problem at all.
That's great.
And I think Brian would probably be amenable to that. They did all take a vote in the last meeting to endorse it themselves, minus two sections. And so the entire thing has been endorsed by the R-A-A-C. The two sections that have not yet been endorsed hope to be endorsed on Sunday.
I saw that.
You did?
I did.
Yeah, so, but I will invite them. I think it's a good idea.
I have a quick question for Mr. Byne.
Yes.
Mr. Byne, you mentioned collaborative problem solving. Is that calm compassion or is that...
I don't think so.
With, when is that date?
The 15th.
Of?
February.
Of February, that's a different, different...
Yeah. Yeah.
Only because I know the presenter for calm compassion used to be a collaborative problem-solving trainer. So that's where there was some confusion there. So thank you for the clarity.
Sure. All right, so that is our Subcommittee and Advisory Committee reports. Items for next agenda are on the planning calendar. And so if anybody has anything that they would like to add to that. Mike?
Not something to add, but I'm noticing for the first time on the planning calendar, we're seeing warrants. And I know that one of the agenda items on the next Budget and Warrant Subcommittee meeting is to make a recommendation for that process. I'm just wondering how those two are related.
So the warrants were added to the planning calendar almost as a placeholder for your upcoming conversation and to see how we would manage those. But we defer to your Subcommittee to inform us.
So if we can meet before the 15th school committee meeting, we'll, I hope, will be prepared to make the recommendation, so moving forward.
So you might want to put that, let me know if you want that on the agenda as an actual item. So on the 15th, guys, we really have a pretty light agenda at this moment in time. But the big ticket item, I would argue, is the regional agreement first read. We also have the district calendar, school safety presentation, actually, these are four big things, and the annual audit presentations that I guess Ross can handle. So buckle up for that. We'll let you know by February 24th if we need to move the March 1st meeting to the 8th. Any other questions or comments?
I'm noticing on the planning calendar, on February 1st, it mentioned a food service rates vote. Did we do that already?
Food service rates vote. Oh, Ross.
So I believe that would have been there as sort of a nearly placeholder, but we do not have rates to vote because of the reimbursement by the state right now. However, if that would change, we would need to come back to the committee with rates for charging for meals prior to being able to charge for meals.
Okay, thanks, Sharon. Yeah, so that annual update is not necessary. Anything else? Let's go to your order. All right, I'm ready to take a motion to adjourn. So moved. I'm second. Second. Sharon first. All those in favor? It is unanimous.